behind us and before us to say when our tears your case we therefore appeal and ask for your mercy for your case in our name in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ and the great rest amen
see eh maybe I should start by eh meeting hours since I apologies that our meeting today started at ten eh that eh give me more people an opportunity to be here so I do as an apology I was here fortunately said God for mine eh so I could see everyone coming in eh my name is now I'm saying it is more now you start away there's a phone or Christian here with me are only members just the legislation in our presence but in itself eh in the personal community of education in our presence I briefly introduce them eh for me who has a random address is eh next to everybody that is coming to this thing now next to all of the she now there's one next to all of the there's one and it was a it was a and with eh the teams and we just let you have officials from the legislature eh it's plain how we're going to proceed without a meeting before we go we will try and mix now which is because really at eh your parents are speaking eh so we will try and and mix eh we have that place of honor but eh do you think it's the presence of the officials of the Department of Education eh good that you said you are good to I do want to know which that means eh so eh so eh this I know eh then yeah they're very national so don't exactly like a child eh national department yes yes eh we don't say if you say eh eh is a new eh say eh say this will spirits eh so you are if I've not managed to yeah we come eh that's just seven that can you want to listen instead of that if eh we have constantly house we also have a time in this meeting if we have and see eh see I'm many as well so I'm opening because eh this meeting eh as you are as I'm the test eh state leaders in the making of this in this country we are not doing it's under you it's more yes again eh decision that leads us that eh in the making of the numbers of the country eh citizens or some us to place protect this is wrongness eh and this points out patients that we are given our own presence eh in relations to the I'm saying this because eh in some eh eh meetings that we have attended eh and I remember today we are meeting because of the basic education laws amendment be that for shame eh this one now that I'm as I was going to come here and I I really want to make this appeal I make it because yes I can find it I was listening to to the hearing I was not physically there after their presentation some people were still standing up asking questions that I'm watching the piece so eh please that let's let's listen she's going to give presentation in English it's going to be translated exactly the same way in Zulu so that we are able at least eh we don't have eh atoms today we don't have eh a sitter or so we don't have a sitter too okay I would use this is for me the thing is yeah I tell in those way it must assist no we can't because I thought this is and we do just he will come in I'm not is involved in so the strongest so what is this is the shy I'm dead if you say is a tunnel is a long Steve I'm emphasizing that eh I I am appealing being that eh we we listen and listen carefully so that eh when we are asking questions and I'm I'm explaining this question thing because we are not going to respond to any questions that you are going to ask eh but if there are questions of clarity eh on based on the lip and presentation of the amendments be a legal advisor will explain the game where you might have not heard eh and I appeal that we 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 can find ourselves to we need to be twenty twenty slash twenty twenty two be because what is presented just again is what is in the pill now see the matter has been changes because the bill goes comes back and it goes and it comes back and it goes so what we are discussing today is what is in the be today and I I'm that's why I want to emphasize this because we we have been to a series of these public hearings and what some of the questions that are being asked the two ways of looking at them is either members of the public we are not properly listening and what the presentation was about eh they must have they must have heard some of the things that are circulating in the social media and that are not in the pill so I I do want to emphasize this point let's discuss what is currently in the bill because what's currently in the bill is what may have a chance when we go to the legislature when it goes back to the National Council of Provinces it's what may have a be signed into law by the president anything else that is not there the chances in any event will be wasting our own time and energy discussing such things so let's let's try I'm sorry our purpose let's try and find the presentation eh the the there are things that are circulating eh sorry we are here to listen and import is in the field and that's why our legal advisor will take the time to explain that this eh as we as we know it was today what is contained in that page if you had a chance to see the first very first version as the bill and you know there were some things we didn't like in that in 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 that first version if they are not here they are no longer here they are no longer here because they might have heard you they might have consulted it further so eh that's why I'm taking my time to really appeal to you let's discuss what is in the bill today and eh eh for for us as members of this committee it is important that we take into account all your views I know we represent political parties here we also have views about politics general eh I I will appeal that let's not eh use this important 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 platform for I know it's a serious season eh because we all have to campaign for the elections now but there are things that are even bigger than the elections this is about the future of our kids and then chances of grand 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 kids so we must politic where we need to but we are dealing with a very important law and there is no country eh anywhere in the world that would not have laws but eh this is part of what we said that people shall govern they must govern themselves they must have views on the eh 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 how they are governing so this is a platform so I'm going to appeal eh that we try and and limit ourselves into what we are discussing eh because if we were to be allowed all of us to run eh eh political eh caps we might not finish this meeting because we'll argue and probably never agree what we want to hear is the real feelings about this bill is it ma- are we making progress eh we 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 eh 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 the both laws that are being amended they have been here for too long so it makes sense that at some point you amend laws so that that's why I'm taking time to explain this so that eh you I'm told that they they were request honourable members that eh can they record this meeting this meeting is public it's a public meeting our meetings unless specified they are public so we 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 have nothing eh obviously there are other laws that govern us eh but eh our meetings are public meetings precisely because we are public representatives so we are not scared of being recorded eh I'm not on Facebook for example I'm sure you can post me on Facebook eh without asking for permission from me eh so I so that you are aware that this is a public meeting eh so those who felt they needed to write to us to ask to record a meeting it's a public meeting I can't explain it better than that a public meeting it means everyone knows about it there's nothing to hide here eh we have no intention of hiding anything our team they are doing the recordings the meeting is on as on social media they are social eh they they are live on social media there was eh a link eh that was also eh sent out so the meeting is public in a true sense of the word public so with that me term we're clear thank you now I get to my tool out
the bill if as you came in you've picked up a summary presentation which is a PowerPoint presentation that's what I will be going through it's a summary but at the same time we have a detailed bill which is in English it's about forty nine pages and we have an easy Zulu version of the memorandum so if you can get those three documents but you will follow my presentation because the bill is very detailed so I will be doing the power presentation and just adding in a few things to clarify so the bill as the chairperson has said is known as Bella in short basic education laws amendment bill of twenty twenty two and if I can give you a brief background if you can go to slide one this bill emanates from the Minister of um Basic Education and the Minister of Basic Education nationally identified certain strategic priorities and one of them is the review of all basic education laws and he has identified two laws that need to be amended the South African Schools Act which I'll be referring to as SASSA and the Employment of Educators Act so if you go through the bill you will see the first forty clauses are proposed amendments to SASSA and then from clause forty to the end are amendments to the Employment of Educators Act so the bill has combined amendments eh to those two laws now what are the reasons because the minister must have reasons for amending legislation the first reason which he calls legislative reforms is the implementation of court judgments because there have been many judgments that have been given arising out of cases either starting with school governing bodies against provincial departments or from parents or from departments themselves disagreeing with school governing bodies and if you can go to page thirty six and page thirty seven of the actual bill you will see some of those judgments there the next reason is for financial and public accountability for school governing bodies because they manage public funds so there has to be accountability of those funds and you will see that there's going to be a lot of emphasis on the management of school funds by school governing bodies the next reason is to improve systems for instance the admission of learners those systems of admission the minister wants to make it easier on the admission processes and especially the documents that are required so as I go along you will see like in the definitions there is a very detailed definition of learner documents what documents are now going to be required to make it easier for parents during admission the other thing is that the minister wants additional regulatory powers for the minister for the HOD and for the MECS it's true so that eh they can enhance decision making and make it easier for all parties involved and the other reason is to give clarity on some of the issues such as home education um procurement central procurement of learner support material dispute resolution clarity on that as well and the final reason is because of technical amendments and legal amendments now before the minister embarked on this eh minister did a lot of consultation going way back in twenty seventeen there were more than five thousand written submissions because as the chairperson said the minister gets submissions then they amend a draft they remove some of the clauses so the minister has been doing consultation also with the school governing body associations with teacher unions home education stakeholders and finally the minister got a socio economic impact assessment and that all the recommendations from that assessment were incorporated into the current bill that we will be presenting the minister has also consulted with cabinet as is required and one of the reasons obvious obviously is to deal with matters of what are the financial implications of all these amendments and you will find if you go to page forty seven of the bill there is a very detailed eh information there about the financial implications and the amount that was required and that's why the bill also had to go to cabinet and then by September last year twenty twenty three the bill was presented in parliament before the Education Portfolio Committee in Parliament and then it was referred to the National Council of Provinces in eh October twenty twenty three and that's how we now have this bill before us before this eh KZD education portfolio committee so this committee is now required in terms of section one one eight of the constitution to carry out their own consultative processes so that as KZD we can get your comments eh on what you would want to be amended or changed in this bill included or removed and then we take all those comments take them to this portfolio committee and then they give their views as KZD legislature to the NCOB so the bill has not been passed because just yesterday somebody sent me a message saying has the bill now been passed Monica all the things that you've been presenting no we are still consulting all the other provinces are carrying out with the same process then it will go back to parliament they will consider all these inputs that you give us and then it goes back to parliament for final approval so if I can go to the actual bill clause by clause the first clause that is being amended is on definitions there are several amendments on the definitions but we've just picked a few and the first one is the amendment of the definition of basic education which will now include grade R to grade twelve the next one is a competent assessor and the definition of competent assessor is specific to clause thirty five which deals with home education because if you're going to take your la- your 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 children through home education there is an assessment that is going to be required at eh certain phases I will explain when we get to home education and you will need this competent assessor and this competent assessor will mean an educator who is registered with SACE it can also be a recognized professional in education it can be a person or a body registered with the South African Qualifications Authority so that's what a competent assessor means when you are looking for a competent assessor the next eh clause that I want to highlight is eh definition of corporal punishment this has been expanded because corporal punishment still continues in schools and in hostels and the minister is expanding this to say any deliberate act against a child that inflicts pain physical discomfort however light to punish or contain that child and will include all these things hitting slapping shaking throwing forcing children to stay in uncomfortable positions washing children's mouth with soap denying them meals putting them out in the sun all these things or even forcing children to do exercises which are not in accordance with the curriculum that's applicable to learners it's going to be an offense and the penalty has been increased now to twelve months so the minister is really emphasizing on that you'll see that corporal punishment is abolished when we get to clause ten the next definition is of eh special education needs because special education needs is mentioned a lot in SASSA but has not been defined so it is now defined and other eh definitions that I can say look at the bill are home education look at the definition of loan for school governing bodies if you enter into loan agreements or guarantees you may want to see what that means also importantly look at the definition of required documents for admission and the definition for drug because that has been expanded now plus two of the bill if I can go to clause two this clause is amending section three one of SASSA and this is to deal with compulsory home attendance eh we as we have said basic education now will start from grade R the compulsory attendance is now from grade R at the age of six not seven and it's no longer from grade one it also increases the penalty that if a parent does not take their child to school at the age of six it was there before but it used to be six months now it has been increased to twelve months so every parent guardian must ensure that they cause their learner to attend school in the year in which the child turns six another thing that has been added on compulsory attendance is the criminalization of anybody who obstructs or prevents or intentionally blocks learners who want to attend school for instance during service delivery protests or any political issues it is also an offense and if there is no just cause for such blocking then um one can also be imprisoned for twelve months clause three is providing for the monitoring of school attendance and what this section is doing is eh it explains the role of the teachers the principal and the school governing body so a teacher who is with a learner every day and the child has not been in school for three consecutive days the section is saying inform your school principal and the school principal equally if within twenty four hours of getting that report you must then investigate and contact the family or the learner and find out what's going on and then escalate it to the school governing body and the school governing body is also being requested when they do their code of conduct or their rules they have to include issues about pi- punctuality and this is to try and deal with the issue of high dropout of learners clause four the one that is dealing with the admission policy and it is providing that the school governing bodies yes must submit the admission policy or any amendment to that admission policy to the head of department for approval however the section has a very comprehensive process that the HOD has to follow including timelines for approving or declining the approval of that eh policy and it's saying that the HOD must approve but take into account the interest of the learner must look at the resources of the school and also must look at the needs of a community eh this clause is also emphasizing that public schools must admit learners without discrimination for instance the section goes on to say if a learner does not have the required documents the learner must still be allowed to continue attending school then the problem must be sorted out between the school principal and the parents of the learner and then it says if a learner also um is denied admission they have a right of appeal equally the school governing body if you are unhappy with the decision made by the HOD relating to that um admission policy you have a right of appeal to the MEC and the detailed timeframes are given there another important thing that's mentioned in this section is that if a parent wants it's not compulsory if a parent wants to take their child to school before the age of six they can do so provided there is capacity in that school they are resources in that school but preference is going to be given to six year olds so it is not a must it is only if a parent chooses to do that so those are the things you will find in that amendment of section five plus five deals with language policy and it is amending section six of SASSA to provide for the governing body yes to submit the language policy of a public school or any amendments to the head of department and the section is saying that even though the language policy is determined by the school governing body it must be limited to one or two official South African languages and sign language has also now been included as you know as an official language again the HOD has to go through a very comprehensive eh process and must consult with the school governing body and the HOD must look at the interest of the learner first of all And the H O D must look at the interest of the learner, first of all, uh when they're looking at the language policy. The H O D must also look at the enrollment trends in that area, the changing numbers of the learners who speak the language in the area. And the same process again, if a school governing body is unhappy with the decision of the H O D, they have a right of appeal to the M E C. Close six, amend section six A of SASSA. And this one is empowering the minister to get outside agencies or experts to advise the minister on matters relating to procedures of assessment of learners. Close seven is amending section eight A, eight of SASSA. And this is to deal with the code of conduct. And what it's providing is that when school governing bodies adapt a code of conduct, they have to take into account not just the provincial law, but the provisions of the constitution. So they have to look at the diverse cultures and beliefs of the learners in that school. I think if you can remember that case of the nose ring, the Pille case, which has just been decided last year. Uh some of these decisions are arising from that case. It took a very long time. It was decided in the Constitutional Court last year. Close eight, six to amend section eight A of SASSA. And this is to do with random search and seizure and random testing of drugs at schools. And previously, SASSA was stating that only a group of learners could be searched. But this is being amended to say if there is reasonable cause or suspicion, the H O uh the school principal or their delegated person can search an individual learner. And it's also providing all this because no one can bring dangerous objects, drugs, liquor or anything of that to schools. So the right to test randomly and to search for these objects if there is reasonable cause is being explained in this new section eight A. It also for principals gives you the process that needs to be followed in doing that. And also if you need to involve the police uh for seizure of whatever has been found, that new section eight A gives you that whole process. Close nine, six to amend section nine. And this is expanding the list of serious misconducts in schools by learners and to clarify what will constitute serious misconduct. And this list is what can lead to suspension as a precaution, including expulsion. And you'll see some of the things that have been added in that list are assault, bullying, drugs, dangerous objects, because these are things that are happening a lot in the schools, cheating in exams, theft. So those are some of the things that have been included there. Close ten, six to amend section ten of SASSA. And it's providing, as I said, that corporal punishment has been abolished and no person may inflict or impose corporal punishment. And if they do so and they are found guilty, then they can be charged with assault and imprisonment up to twelve months. Close eleven is amending section ten A of SASSA and it prohibiting initiation practices in both hostels accommodation and during school activity. Plus twelve is amending section twelve of SASSA. And it's providing for a school known as a specialized focus on talent school. So it's providing that um a school governing body can apply to the M E C to be designated as a specialized school on talent. Talent being either on sports or arts or performing arts. And the H O D can also identify a public school to be so designated. If you read that section, you will see that it gives a very comprehensive process that has to be followed by the M E C before such designation. Uh they have to notify the school governing body, the parents, the community and look at issues of labour as well. Close thirteen, six to amend section twelve A. And to provide that for merger, merging of schools, one or two schools, where then a new public school will be established. This section is saying that the process that must be followed by the M S M E C is very comprehensive in the section. And the M E C must give notices to the parents again, to the community, including publishing notices in local newspapers, including calling for public hearings. And again, looking at the legal implications of those mergers. The section goes into details on issues like what will happen to the school governing bodies. If you merge two schools, maybe you need an interim school governing body. Also, if you merge two schools, what how do you deal with the operational issues? If you had um uh disciplinary issues pending in one school, so you'll find those things in the new section twelve A. Close to fourteen is amending section twenty one. And this one is empowering the H O D to centrally procure identifying identified learning and teaching support material. But the key word here is in consultation with the school governing body. So again, it's not a must for the H O D, H O D must do this in consultation with the school governing body. And the reason is uh they're trying to find an efficient and effective and economic utilization of public funds, the way it's possible to procure centrally, then the H O D may do so. Close fifteen is amending section twenty two of SASSA. And this one is to do with withdrawal of school functions. So the H O D can withdraw uh school functions of a school governing body if there are reasonable grounds to do so. And also again, after complying with a very comprehensive process that is required, um the H O D must inform the school governing body of the reasons and get representation, they must, he he or she must hear the school governing body. The section however does provide that um in an emergency, the H O D is entitled to withdraw functions, but the H O D can then reverse uh that decision. The H O D can also appoint people to perform those functions for a period of three months, but not longer than a year. Close sixteen is amending section twenty three. And this one is empowering school governing bodies to co-opt people from outside the community who has relevant expertise in assisting in the discharging of S G B functions because as you go uh we go on, you will see that the requirement for school governing bodies to have good governance is being regulated. So if a school governing body needs expertise, whether it is accountant, financial people or legal people, then this section is empowering them to co-opt those type of people into the school governing body. Close seventeen is amending section twenty four. And this one is empowering the minister to determine the number of school governing body members, their manner of election and appointment for schools that have learners with special educational needs. But it used to be the M E C, it's no longer the M E C, it will be the minister. And once again, the minister can call for submissions and consider those submissions. Close eighteen is inserting a new section twenty four A. And this one is going to regulate the school governing bodies of this new type of school, the specialized focus on talent school. Because uh this has not been regulated before, it's a new area. And then close nineteen is amending section twenty five. This one is empowering the H O D to dissolve school governing bodies. And the key word here is school governing bodies that have ceased or stopped to perform the functions that are allocated to them. Also, the H O D must have reasonable grounds, there must be a reason why they want to dissolve. And if the school governing body is not happy with that decision, they have a right of appeal to the M E C. Once again, the H O D can appoint qualified people to perform those functions for a period of up to three months, but not for more than one year. Close twenty is expanding the provisions of section twenty six. And this is dealing with um good governance again, it provides that school governing ma- uh school governing body members must recuse themselves where they have an interest. You know, when they are sitting to discuss the matters of recruitment of staff or procurement of goods or services. But they have to disclose their personal interests in companies. They also have to disclose gifts that they have been given, their direct or indirect or personal or financial interests. And this is to avoid a conflict of interests when they take decisions. Close twenty one is amending section twenty seven of SASSA. And this is to provide that no person will be remunerated or paid in any way for the performance of their duties in the school governing body or even attending of meetings, it has to be voluntary. Close twenty two is amending section twenty eight of SASSA to empower the minister, not the M E C, to determine the election of school governing body members. Currently, this is done by the M E C. And the reason that uh the minister wants to do this is to bring consistency in the sector in all the provinces. Close twenty three is amending section twenty nine of SASSA. And it provides that the chairperson of a finance committee has to be a parent of a of the school and a parent who is not employed at the school. Close twenty four is amending section thirty two of SASSA. And this is giving clarity on the role of learners who sit in school governing bodies, who are members of the governing body. And it prohibits these learners from taking part in the process of employment of staff, whether educators or non educators. They also cannot enter into contracts on behalf of the school. They cannot vote on resolutions of the school governing body. And they are equally being protected to say that they will not be held personally liable for those decisions that are taken. Close twenty five is about closing of public schools. This deals with the M E C and what the M E C needs to do to de- to deal with the closure of public schools. Again, the M E C has to follow a very comprehensive consultation process before he or she closes a school. They must in writing inform the school governing body, the parents, the community, again, publish their intention in newspapers, even call for public hearings. But the section goes to clarify that if an M E C does a physical verification of a school and finds that there are no learners registered, the M E C can start the process of closing that school. The section also provides, if it's a primary school with less than a hundred and thirty five learners, the M E C can start that process. Also, if it's a secondary school with less than two hundred learners, the M E C can start that process of closing a school. But then the M E C must give notice, M E C must also make alternative arrangements. Because if you close this school, what about issues of transport? Uh M E C must also look at the issues of um how the assets are going to devolve to the state. Because if you close one school, what happens to the other school and those assets? And the M E C must look at the interests of learners in the community and also the effective use of public funds. So those are the reasons the M E C can use to close a school. Close that thirty deals with the exemption from payment of school fees. And this is making it easier for those parents who struggle to get information from the other parent, either they are separated or they are divorced or they cannot trace the other parent. This section is now saying such a parent can now submit an affidavit. And in that affidavit, the parent can then state that maybe they are unable to trace the other parent or maybe the other parent is unwilling to give information. So this is just going to make it easier and it should serve serve a sufficient proof to be able to allow the parent to be exempted from the payment of fees. Close thirty one is a substitution of section forty two. And this is to provide for the financial affairs and keeping of detailed financial records by a school governing body. And why we said if they need to co-opt people to assist them in doing this, school governing bodies have a power to do that now. So they must keep detailed records on prescribed aspects of their financial affairs. They have to draw up annual financial statements within specified times. If you read the section, you'll see that it's it should be no later than three months after the end of the financial year. That financial statement has to show things like the investment, the donations that the school has received. And also has to show what has been received and has been spent. So this doesn't have to be audited, but those records must be kept, that's what this section is providing. Then close thirty two is amending section forty three of SASSA to empower the H O D. If the H O D deems it necessary or if there is a reason to, the H O D can authorize investigations into the financial affairs of a public school. And the H O D can even request for the auditor general to carry out an audit of those records. And also appoint forensic auditors and forensic investigators. Again, it's just for good accountability on financial, on public funds. Close thirty three is amending section forty six. And that section forty six of SASSA is to do with registration of independent schools. So this section is saying that it's increasing the penalty for any person who operates an unregistered independent school. Previously, it was three months if you run an unregistered uh independent school, it's now been increased to twelve months. Close thirty four deals with the independent schools that are subsidized by the M E C. And it amending section forty eight to say that the M E C can now request for submission of quarterly reports to the head of department. And also they can be asked to submit actually audited accounts because they are being subsidized as an independent school. Close thirty five is substituting section fifty one of SASSA. And this is to give clarity in regard to home education. And what this clause is saying that if a parent chooses to home educate their child, then they must apply to the H O D for registration. The H O D also must approve if they are satisfied that that home education is in the interests of the learner. So everything that is going to be done by the H O D must be in the interest of the learner. The H O D can cancel if they have granted that registration. If they are convinced that it is not in the interest of the learner, the H O D can also decline an application. But uh the H O D has very stringent timelines that they are given. In fact, I think it says it's within sixty days, H O D must give a decision. And if the H O D has not given the parent a decision, then it will be deemed that there was approval. Provided a parent can show um that they did actually apply. So whereas it seems like there's stringent measures on the parents, which I'm going to mention, the H O D has also been given very stringent timeframes which he has to comply with. Now, what will the H O D be looking at? The first thing, as I said, that that home education is in the interest of the learner. That that home education um that the parent understands and takes full responsibility for the implementation of that home education. That the education is actually suitable for the age of that child, for the skills of that child, for the grade and level of ability of that child. And then the parent must undertake to avail the necessary resources for the supporting that child in the learning. The parent must also monitor the learner's academic progress. They have to arrange for that competent assessor that we mentioned at the end of each phase until grade nine or fifteen. Now, remember we said at each phase, there are three phases from grade R to grade three. At the end of that phase, you arrange for a competent assessor. Then the next phase is grade four to six, a competent assessor. And then grade seven to nine, that's where the competent assessors will be required. And then they have to ensure the parents that the standard of home education is not substandard to the education that is offered in public schools. And the reason for this or inferior to the national curriculum statement is because some of the parents start home education and then they stop it halfway. Then they bring the learners to public schools and they find that the learners are actually struggling to get back into the mainstream of education. And then again, for the parents, they have to submit the evidence of the learner's assessment. So that they can show that that learner has actually attained that level of the phase. So all this is being done uh not to make it difficult for the parents, but for the interest of the learners. Close thirty eight is amending section sixty of SASSA. And this is to do with the liability of the state. Remember, we mentioned clause thirty six. School governing bodies have to get permission when they enter into loans and lease agreements. Now, if they don't do so, the state is not going to be liable as a result of any act or omission in connection with any business that is operated by such a school. Even if the school is running that business for supplementing school resources. Because apparently what's happening is schools enter into lease agreements over one year, two years, three years. Then the new school governing bodies come in and they find that they are tied into contracts or agreements that probably they are unable to get into. So the state is not going to be liable where there was no compliance with the requirements of SASSA section thirty six subsection two. Close thirty nine is amending section one, section sixty one to empower the minister to make regulations. And I need to emphasize as the chairperson said, these regulations have not yet been made. It's just giving the minister the power in the act to say whatever law you pass here, minister, in future, you can make regulations. And some of the regulations mentioned are management of learner pregnancy, those regulations have not yet been made. And once they are made, the minister must bring them back to this committee and to the public for And once they are made, the minister must bring them back to this committee and to the public for comments, for admission of learners and for education districts and other issues. So whatever minister is passing here, they are empowered in future to bring regulations. Clause forty is just amending the very profound preamble of SASSA. And it's just adding that there will be promotion and protection of the rights of basic education. Then that is the end of the amendments of South African Schools Act. Now I will get to amendments in the Employment of Educators Act. So clause forty one and forty two are amending section one and five of the Employment of Educators Act. And this is a technical amendment to remove reference to things like the further education, training institution and reference to adult basic education centers. Because those are no longer under basic education. They they moved to higher education. Clause forty three is amending section seven of the Employment of Educators Act. And all that this is providing is that when you are looking at the educator establishment and the filling of posts, constitutional requirements such as equality and equity and other democratic values are going to be taken into account. It's also providing that there will be a possibility for appointment on promotion even when an educator is still on probation. Clause forty four, forty five and forty six are technical amendments to sections eight, nine and eleven of the Employment of Educators Act. Also deleting uh clauses that are now words that are no longer re- relevant. Clause forty seven is amending section seventeen of the Employment of Educators Act and ins- inserting and expanding the list of serious misconduct for educators. Clause forty eight is amending a technical amendment of section eighteen again. Uh the one that I need to emphasize clause forty nine because this is a new section uh in the Employment of Educators Act. And it is prohibiting educators from conducting business with the state. And it says that uh if one is found conducting business with the state, it is going an offense. It's going to be an offense and if convicted, educators can be convicted to a period of up to five years. And it also says that their employment must be terminated if they are found guilty of conducting business with the state. Clause fifty is amending section thirty five to empower the minister again to make regulations in terms of the Employment of Educators Act, especially regarding district staffing. Clause fifty one is repealing section thirty eight. Clause fifty two and fifty three are technical amendments. And then clause fifty four just provides the short title that once this bill is passed, it hasn't been passed yet. Once it is passed, it will be called the Basic Education Laws Amendment Act. And it will come into operation on a date fixed by the president by proclamation in the Gazette. Only then will we know that the bill has been amended. So we ask you to please give us your comments. At the back, we have papers where you can uh add on to any of the comments. And also on our website, we have an email address. A comment clause on the twentieth of February. Thank you, Chairperson.
Eh, I'm glad I'm taking October twenty seventeen. Eh, I tell you, it's eh it it's a tool. What's wrong is it's a tool is a tool is not a puzzle. It's cool, man. Eh, it's not. Oh, what's the good thing about local, what's the best one? So I'm gonna try it. It's funny, eh, it's in there. Yeah, I'm not getting it in front of Africa. I'm gonna try it. It's a bizarre, it's cool. I'm gonna try it. Let's see, you know, you're not so cheap. Can you know, I'm sorry, but I'm telling you, it's a little bit harder. Let's see, it's a little bit harder. Eh, my car, it's a little home education. We said, take it, I'm gonna try it. Five May, two twenty twenty one. What about it? It's a chance. Okay, let me tell you, it's a little bit. Oh, I'm going to go to the sky. Why a committee in the beginning, it's in front of eh eh Parliament. It's a long game. Oh, what's the matter? Look, I'm very sad. I'm going to sit here. Eh, I'm big. Oh, so big. I'm not sure. I'm going to take it. I'm telling you, I'm telling you. When I'm not, I'm not. It's Africa. Oh, I tell you, I'm telling you. It's a baby eh, it's a it's a N C O P. No, I'm sitting. Come to the long game eh eh eh, beggarly. If you're there, oh, it's okay. It's cutting last week. It's easy to get in. This is a good way to see this. It's a little bit, it's a little bit. I am a corner eh, we cabinet, it's a long game. It's a good one. November twenty twenty one. It's a song, I'm going to get it. I'm going to see it. I'm going to see it. I'm going to pay it. I'm telling you, it's a smile. I'm going to do it. It's a bit bizarre. I'm going to go. I'm going to go to the list. It's a little bit. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to take it. I'm telling you, it's a good thing. It's a little bit, it's a little bit. Okay, I'm trying to say twenty six September twenty twenty three. I come to the long game. I beg you, it's in front of the beg. So you're moving it along, it's a corner. What I'm trying to say twenty six October twenty twenty three. Eh, it's a seller. Eh, I'm kind of going to go. It's fun, that's why. Oh, second, I'm going to ask you to sell it. I'm telling you, it's a shame. It's a it's a sense. It's a it's a. I'm glad I'm my land. It's a bit of a party. Eh, my land, I know. I'm going to tell you, it's a little bit. Oh, I'm going to go. Oh, it's a one on eight. It's a little bit. Oh, I'm telling you, it's a shame. I know, I'm going to. I'm telling you, I'm going to. I'm going to say, it's a good time. I'm going to go. Eh, I'm glad I'm going to. I'm going to get it. It's a good time. I'm sorry, I guess. I'm going to go. It's a little bit, it's a little bit. It's a good time. I'm telling you, it's a party. It's a lot. I'm telling you, it's a party. So I'm telling you, it's a big time. I'm telling you, it's a good time. It's a little bit, it's a little bit. It's a case. Oh, it's a good time. I'm telling you, it's a little bit. I'm telling you, it's a little bit. It's a little bit, it's a little bit. Eh, it's a little bit, it's a little bit. It's a bandana. You're going to create art. It's a good show. Yeah, I'm getting it. It's human. I'm going to go create twelve. Oh, I see. I see. I see. I see. I'm going to go create one. It's a good show. I go create twelve. It's a case. It's a little bit, it's a little bit. It's a little bit, it's a little bit. I'm going to go. No, I'm not. I'm not. Oh, it's a little bit, it's a little bit. Eh, I'm going to go. It's a little bit, it's a little bit. I'm sorry, I'm going to try it. It's a long game. Oh, I'm going to go. It's a good time. Eh, it's a twenty. I'm telling you, I'm going to go. It's a little bit, it's a little bit. Eh, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to go. I'm not getting it in front of you. Eh, I'm going to tell you. I'm sorry, I'm going to try it. I'm telling you, it's a it's a. It's a South African Qualifications Authority eh, two thousand and eight. I'm sorry, I'm telling you. I'm telling you, I'm telling you. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to be. Oh, it's a good time. I'm going to go. It's a little bit, it's a little bit. I'm going to go. Eh, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. It's a little bit, it's a little bit. It's a little bit, it's a little bit. It's a good time. I'm going to go. It's a little bit, it's a little bit. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Eh, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. No, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm telling you, it's a little bit. It's not a good time. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. It's a business. It's a it's a. I'm going to say, I'm going to. I'm sorry, I'm telling you. It's a. Eh, it's a. I'm going to go. It's a good time. It's a good time. It's a good time. I'm going to say, it's a good time. It's a SASSA. Eh, it's a little bit. I'm going to go. I'm telling you, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Eh, it's a little bit. Eh, it's a little bit. Eh, it's a good time. It's a good time. I'm telling you. Eh, I'm telling you, I'm going to go. 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 I'm telling you. Eh, it's a good time. This is a good way to go. I'm telling you, it's a good time. I'm telling you, it's a good time. It's a good time. Three, three, one, some some tetra is SASSA. I'm going to go. I'm telling you, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm telling you, I'm going to go. I'm telling you, it's cool. It's a good time. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Eh 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 twelve. I'm going to say, I see. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm telling you, I'm going to go. Eh, I'm telling you, it's two. I see, I'm telling you. Eh, it's a good time. I'm going to go. I'm telling you. I'm telling you. It's a good time. It's a good time. I'm telling you, I'm going to go. Eh eh, I'm telling you, I'm going to go. I'm telling you, it's a little bit. Ah, I'm going to go. It's a good time. I'm going to go. It's a good time. Eh, by a by a figure, it's cool. So I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm telling you, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm telling you. This is a good time. It's a good time. It's a it's a good time. It's a good show. I'm telling you, I'm going to go. It's a good time. I'm going to go. 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 It's cool. I'm going to say, it's a good time. I'm telling you, it's a good time. It's a little bit. I'm going to go. 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 Eh, it's a good time. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. It's a good time. Eh, it 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 it. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm telling you, it's a little bit. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Eh, it's a night.[1413.71] Kudakoni atango mbalo fanele ibuge eh guzenai izenelisugu ti kufanelele inu ba mkomu. Kotakonke kufanele balige gu gu ti pegalela. Inchi segela ye umduana gu ti nomama ngabe inu ba mkomu. Oma ngabe gu ti inu ba mkomu ay kumbisi. Gu ti ipegalele inu ba mkomu ye umduana kaku la zugu zupera eh izimo. Gu ti mchambe masubuga gu ti emparati ningo gosimo sabantu. Gu tabantu bakuluma lumuli im desonge lesu zinto njalo njalo. Fanelela gugue logo eh intro yomnyango ngapam gu ti moglele nomama isasi sege leo leo inu ba mkomu. Kela boko bantuan. Besu gu ti iska basestan ge so na esutribela iska basestu passe sasa. So na ge stilinsegelu gu ti eh izi ama komite la wabazali engamele iskole ama SGP nao. Pindi gu ti eh ethule ge inu ba mkomu ye zilimi. Aba ulimi olulu otu nomama ngapezulu. Ezilimini ezishume nambili. Esentetweni za seningzim Afrika. Luwaso kumbulu gu ti eh ulimbe zbawana lo selu yenye ezilimi ezentetweni zim Afrika. Ika kula zufana lugu ulim opegalela gu tilia sebenza eh gule onda. Nomaga lesu sfunda lesu skole esu ge eh si si sakelu e ngakone. Ika kula zimparati eyakele lesu skole. Besu gu ti ge iska basestu paga so na esitribela iska basestu pa esesasa eh sinigeza gongongo ukshara zulonke. Amandla guthaguazu gu tache izi ngampani nomama bantu bangapansu. Baba melulege maylanan esinda ba ez tindage. Yogis na kubiza ngoshelelo lesu mfundo la zulonke eh njalo njalo. Besu gu ti ge iska bases kumbisa so na ge esitribela iska basesi shaka lumbili. Somtehto mkuu so na si stilinsegelu gu ti eh inu wa guspata eh kufanele gu ti ngapegeleli nje gu. Pe la eh mtehto sfundazo ofanele gile nomo konde ne. Kotipugue kulemi ye mtehto efana nomtehto segela waseningzim Afrika. Gangi nomtehtolo esu utribela njala manje guse. Gu ti leo inu ba mkomu esentetweni nomaya hamsana nomtehto. Besu gu ti iska bases shaka lumbili so na esutribela iska bases shaka lumbili. Eight eight somtehto mkuu. Maylanage no gu ti ipinu ba fanele iskole zilandele. Omasfisupo banomasfisupu se shaba fundispegis nde fana nezka ali. Eh nezta ramizo njalo njalo. Lomtehto ge uwalula ukuti. Ndjungo ba angeke ukshaba nje gu ti ipopola abafundi eli ngase shwalise shwa eh nanga sipiska. Kotakwale sskole sesu ngawa zugu ti si 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 apegalele gu ti sskole. Sesu ngawa zugu ti sesesho nomama ngabe twa. Di oye to mchambe maguti kiasole gu gu ti ngenze gu gube. Eh mchambe kukona ndefana nale nomama ngabe taramizo. Nomama esinyeseykali nomama izi ndojie esu vumeligile gu ti zipato esko eh ematregene skole. Besu gu ti iska bases shaka lulu nye so na ge esutribela eshaka lulu nye somtehto mkuu. Stilinsegela ge ngoshelele senzo esu ngasbiza ngesenzos ongaspati eh zongaspati. Ale eskolene eh ngabe senzo abafundi. Besu gu ti ge eseshume so na esitribela eseshume somtehto mkuu. Stilinsegela go uku etwa ge omtego gwe 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 ngubole yo gu ukshawa nomama yo gu. Banisho ukshawa abafundi. Ogu gu ti umuntu njala manje sektwa umuntu oyo otolaga la enzelo oko. Nomama sitijutisha otolaga la enzelo oko. Nomama ngabe isep ilaxalila ilasibiza kwanaye hostela abafundi. Nomama simatregene skole nje usen ngawa zugu tabegu kala lo ku lo ku masa umfundu. Besu gu ti ge iska bases shume nananyesonage. Sutribela iska basetene ace somtehto mkuu. Uisona ge eh esivimbela nomama esivimbela. Ogu kubekona lugu se esibize skole ngo gu tufigisa. Oma ngabe mchambe twa umfundu se moxa. So kumbulu kutikwa kwanale ndaba ebetu bamfigisa. Ututumfundu bazumsummeza abanya abafunda asibebata la bamenzise izinto. Eh esu ngamule moglele gile na lo ko futige. Gu into lomtehto uzam gu tuknand. Besu gu ti ge iska ba eseshume nambili so na ge. Yogiska basutribela eseshume nambili sesumtehto mkuu. So na stilinsegela ge gu ti eh eh ama ama komite skole iska kula ziskole iska hulume nomasomparati. Afagistela lugu ngongo shasufundazo. Uma efisugu ti lesu skole si sonze njenge skole. Esu ngati si zo tatu njenge skole esitire kaku lugo ketegile mkakene tiso ngabo mkaka wizobtrigo. Nomama weze 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 milalo. Un intro yomnyango gwe fanele gu ti sonze lesu skole. Gu ti si 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 tatu nganjalo. Besi enza iznomo ngongo sheswe si fundazo. Uma ebon gu ti gui nestingo sogwenza nganjalo. Besu gu ti eseshume nan tatu so na esitribela es twelve ace somtehto mkuu. Stilinsegela ge uku shanganisa ku skole esimbili nomama ngapezulu. Guse kubekona iskole esisha iska hulume. Kotage gune mbandela ge nomama gno oshele fanele eh ngongo sheswela landele. Akensegi suguti abafundi abalimali ngalese skati ku shanganisa lesu skole. Fanele gugue izi ndesfana nezinto zoktu tabase abafundi. Ne no gu tabafundi leskati kusakana loloshele. Izipezinye izinto afanele eh bashelelezo. Akensegi suguti mfundo ya bu yakubek. Besu gu ti eseshume nan esonage. Esitribela esimashuma mambili nan nye somtehto mkuu. Sinigeza ge intro yomnyango eh amandla. Ogu ti agazu gu ti izincaisa zokfundu no fundu esa zitengwe. Eh zingeni lesufundazo. Nomama ngiti zitengwe esinde nezso. Otakwungu abu gu ti skole nezskole zitengela so na. Kotage logofanele agwenze ngokba mtsana. Nomama ngokbo mtsanage nama SGP. Guse akensegi so ngubincho sonka ngela akensegi suguti. Guse tinsiswa ismaliska hulume ngendlela eh eh yo ngayo na ngendlela ekumbisa. Gu ti guyongiwa imali no gu ti malis tinsiswa ngendlela. Eh fanele no glandela imtehto zoktenwa gu ismbala eh ka hulume ni fanele. Besu gu ti ge isi kaba. Se shume neslan so na uisona esutribela esamashuma mambili somtehto mkuu. Na sasunigeza ge intro yomnyango amandla. Ogu ti angawa zyu ukuti ngoglandela eh i i i i imnubua etize. Angawa zuku tachotise eh amandla. Nomama isebenzie etize eh ye SGP nomaya komite leskole. Kotakfanele gu tabo gue kula zugu ti. Axona nisimesputu ma. Maku isimesputu ma ngatinge gu gu tu ngongo shes. Awachotise la omandla ngalegu gu tialandele eh imtata ngo tize. Besi sitige eseshume nesitu passe so na ge. Sifosha gu ti sitribela isi kaba. Sisamashuma mambili nan tatu somtehto mkuu. Ogunegeza ge eh isama komite skole abazali. Amandla gu ti agazu gu ti. Atoga abantu abange emparatin aban 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 awana ama lungwe SGP. Uti babaligelele mchambe mabe ongu ti mkakene tize. Ugwe wenziswela lugu zabuetla. Gu ti mchambe zutolu gu tumuntu ongu ti eh weze 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 eh weze ismali. Mchambe ge kumuntu nao loluluwa zigu SGP. Nomama mchambe weze somtehto utolu gu tukonu umdu ngo. Tukotage gu SGP. SGP ngawa zyu gu gu ti ipoga abantu abanjalo guse bago azu baligelele. Oguze ngoba kaku la zidomtehto zamutribela. Uzamu tala kule tenini. Yogisibiza ngako prekafenes nomo patwa. Ngusogo ekoli ngendele fanele no glandela lugu mtehto kula zidoma. Kulunyo ngogo patwa weze ismali elandelele. Siye ge ge isi eskabeni eseshume neseshume nes kumbisa. Sutribela esamashuma mambili nan esesasa. Na sasugisigeza ngongo shara zulonke eh amandla. Ogu tahuazu gu ti eh angume maylanan esbalu samalu ngu. Ama SGP no ora no ketwa o eskolene eska hulume. Esu ge zina abafundi abasu ge benetingo. Zeze mfundo esketegile njoba kati si taza de ngazelo. Ekaleni eh eskabenzokala. Besu gu ti iska ba eslandela eseshume nesshaka lulu mbiili. So na ge si fagiska besisha uku twenty four A. So na ge si laula kaku la zubulu ngu eh bama gavene mbo ti ala zikole. Esu ge seele gu ti sifonsa njenge skole zutula kaku la zizi. Mkakene otise logisibiza ngokambe. Omtehlu gu zufunu gu ti kubeskole zupri la weze mfundo nomama weze zotri ko njalo njalo. Njala manje loku agu ngogo ngogo mtehto kona agula uliwa. Besu gu ti iska ba ge eseshume nesshaka lulu nye so na ge. Sutribela esimashuma mambili neslan somtehto mkuu. Sognigeza ge intro yomnyango amandla. Ogu ti ashakaze isGP ebona gala. Gu ti siye gile nomama sa yenzi isebenzie enigezoyona. Oglantis wakalu mtehto. Oma ngabe ku gu ti unezizati esu ngala nezbona gala eshu gu ti. Nomama intro yomnyango gu ti guenze loku. Kaniskolage nomama SGP. Inelungelelo gu ti oma ngabe gu gu ti ay hamsana. Nezngomo se intro yomnyango suguti eh kushakaze leo SGP. Bangabe se bisusela ge lesistela ku emsi gu ti spinesu buere zubonaga lugu ti eh sifuna banina. Sukubega esikabeni eseshume samashuma mambili so na ge eh si kandu gu ti si eh sandise kaku la zidomtehto. Zeska bases samashuma mambili nesitu passe somtehto mkuu. Espegalele gu ti mchambe ma ngabe ku gu ti kukona ilu ngule SGP. Eli tuvali sheleli mchanganu inela. Twa laga lugu ti mchambe kufanele. Guta tye isnumo maylanan nengampani nomama no muntu otiso zogwenza. Isebenzina lesu skole. Kotamchambe thola laga lugu ti leo SGP. Lelelungu mchambe li nama sheya. Nomali nobhlila ana lo muntu ngabo asha. Uti shamchambe thola laga lugu ti lololungu le SGP. Li amazi nomama isobosalo njalo njalo. Li hota bibo mchanganu guse eh guse gugu be gu ti. Isnumo eshatu lapo azange abaindaenyo gu ti. Abenomtelelo zutalu gu ti eh wenzelele kwabanya abangabe banetuba. Lu gu ti nababa tole eh lelotuba. Besu gu ti samashuma mambili nan esoniska ba. Esitribela esamashuma mambili nesshaka nenis kumbisa sesasa. So na akensegi suguti. Sisamukaza nje. Ukuti uku ba ilu ngule SGP. Uba ilu ngu ngobo buvolontea. Agukon kokele kokele fanele fezbe guaza. Bantu ngapambe ban gene ku SGP. Gu tu sukunge nalango bungezu itola ngokelo. Fanele baglindele loku. Besu gu ti esamashuma mambili nambili so na. Sutribela esamashuma mambili nesshaka lumbili. Somtehto mkuu lesunigeza ngongo shara zulonke. Amandla eh ogunuma ugu ti maylanano ketwa eh kwama kwamalu ngu ama SGP. Guse longe lok lapage akse zuba ngongo shasufundazo. Nomama situ emsi. Ngokza amage la ugu ti akensegi suguti. Indelela nomama iskati ama timeline aketwa ngao ama walungu. Ama komite skole gwenze nganaskati espanayo nganjela efana yo. Ezwele longana. Besu gu ti ge esamashuma mambili nesatu so na. Sifosha uku tribeela esamashuma mambili na shaka lulu nye. Somtehto mkuu. Na sofuti espegalele gu ti. Omuntu zobusala we komite leze ismali eh skoli. Nangege kube ilu ngule SGP. Eli kashwe ili esu skole. Besu gu ti ge iska ba si samashuma mambili nan esona. Esitribela esamashuma matabu nambili eh so na ge sizamo gu ti. Gu bakwana abafundi. Ababa indraenyo komite la bazali lila uli skole. Kotage si ababimbela gu ti babaindaenyo. Yoshelelo asha guti sha. Nomama ban gene esvumalale nize inkontalaga. Ekamenile skole nomama ba vota makufanele gu votilo na nomama ini. Eh nga ba ipati uisabelo ismali njalo njalo skole. Ngoba sukwe gu gu zanyu gu ti gu figele bo na gutu bangabu tuksebe bo pezele. Oma ngabe gu bakwana isngomo tinguti si si fagalu nzelelo. Mchambe ngantyo lo njalo njalo. Besu gu ti iska ba samashuma mambili nan tlanu so na ge sifosha eh tribeela iska ba samashuma matabu nan tatu. Eh sipegalele kaku no kvala we kollege iska hulume nomasomparati. Ngongo shesufundazo ge na angawa zugu ti. Aswale iskole oma. Chamutolu gu ti maku iskole sama bangapansu. Sinabafunda bangapansu kwama wa one hundred and thirty five. Nomama mchambe maku iskole sama bangapezulu. Masina abafundi. Abangapansu kwama kulu amabili. Eh no ugnie ngapegalele ge ngongo shesabona gu ti gwenze gube nestingo suguti. Eh nomama mchambe mayenge ekomefige skolene tuelu gu tabu kuparazi. Bo gu ti bakwana abafundi abapalsiwe lesu skole njalo njalo. Besu gu ti iska ba samashumi amabili nesitu passe so na. Sutribela esamashuma matabu nesitu passe somtehto mkuu. Stilinsegela go gu ti eh ama komite skole lao angatela iskunya zuzkango shasufundazo. Okuse ban genellele na nomama isipisvumela. Anamchambe ngenze gube zimalimbo Lego eh nama perenke njalo njalo. Ika kula zidoma ngabe lesu zvumela no. Zizo ba zvumelanose skati ngapezulu eh kwamgoznyanga ezishume nambili. Besu gu ti iska ba ge sisamashuma mambili neskombisa so na. Eh sifosha kaku la zidugu ti sitribela. Indelela obegage ngayo. Iska ba samashumi amatabu neskombisa somtehto omkuu. Bo gu ti ge ibegwe eh ama kama atize ngendlela eh nja. Besu gu ti ge iska ba samashuma mambili nesshaka lumbili. Sifosha ugu ti sitribela iska ba samashuma matabu nesshaka lumbili. Somtehto mkuu. Lapage sizamo taza gu gu ti. Isabelo malo meipati eskolene eh gumele iguan zugu ti. Aba 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 abazali baitoli ngapam go gu ti eh mchambe ye thule. Mchanganu ni wa omyaga yo onke. Abazali lapuswe zopasiswa konipati. Dogu ngena nitrishe amazon do amabili ngapam ba gu figele o mchanganu. Guse abazali bago azu. Ba ibugue leo 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 isabelo ismali. Ba figure bago azu. Ma kono paula bafunu gwenza eh babene lungu lelo gwenza loku. Besu gu ti iska ba samashuma mambili nesshaka lulu nye. So na ge esifosha utribela. Isika ba thirty eight ace somtehto mkuu. Sizama uku zaga gu ti eh ugu zama. Ugula ulu la ugu ti. Oma gu gu ti mchambe utisha nomama umuntu esebenzise iskole. Esu ngapansu kaku hulume. Anga angaitwala ngas ngapansu kazi pi. Imbandela nomama ngapansu kwa 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 mipi eh imtata ngo. Inkokelo enga pezulu komolo akelo. Zuka utola mchambe. Utola gu ti utisha usebenzenge. Walshula eh okuswe gilindele gilugu ti asebenzenga. Oma mchambe mabe fisutu bamengezilo. Yogisibiza ngo gu ti ama incentives. Gu fanele gubo gu ti eh gunendelela esetiswa elandela. Besu gu ti iska ba samashuma matabu so na sifosha. Eh utribela iska ba samashuma mane na ye forty one somtehto mkuu. Eh so pegalela ututumzali mchambe. U u u yenayeto okulisa eh nomama fundisa isngane. Ageko omuni umzali. Ogu ti mayesa uku tafagistela. Sugutakulu letena ngai kuki male skole. Izipisnyatela ngaslandele. Lanjala manje sebisstigelugu ti. Usu ngawa zje gu ti. Ufagalo yosibiza ngo ti noati efungela. Esima poiseni. Ogu zukwazu ufagalese istele. Ngalego gu ti eh ufage ezinye zalizi zalimbalo eh shezitinga. Oma fisugu tufagalese istele. Besu gu ti iska ba samashuma matabu nan nye so na ge. Singena eskundele neseska ba samashumi amane nambili somtehto mkuu. So na ge sitige sipegalela kaku la zama ricoteze ismali. Ugu ti skole menisensegi suguti sawatzi inama ricoteze ismali. Si kwasu foot gu ti si kwasu biga ngesimo sezmali se skole. Si pinde foot si lungu se. Yogisibiza ngo gu ti statement se simo sezmali. So nyaga se skole eh ngendlela efanele. Guse makufanele babye eh eh mchanganu no bazali bago azu bago nze loku. Besu gu ti iska ba samashuma matabu nambili so na ge si. Si tribeela iska ba samashuma mane nan tatu. Esunigeza intro yomnyango i lungu lelo gu ti. Enze openyo maylanan esimo se imali nomama no patwa we imali. Iskole iska hulume. Angaza atela ngisho i i i i ovisili gamtjani ngama puku chigele. Gu ti lu nze lo isebenzie. Me bona gu nestingo umngongo shes. O um um intro yomnyango. Besu gu ti ge isi kaba samashuma matabu nan tatu so na ge. Si tribeela esimashumi amane na nesitu pa forty six. Somtehto mkuu. Ika kula zige loguspegalela eh uku 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 elulu agenmchambe gwenza ulo. Nomama gusstigelugu zentaulo. Gunano maymopi umuntu nomama inlangano ozoto lugu ti. I i i ikunga nomama. Ineskole esizmele esu ngapalisie ngo kusentetweni. Njenge skole esizmele. Besu sakubega ge iska baselandela esika thirty four so na si tribeela. O forty eight somtehto mkuu. Eh esi maylanage no gu nemali suginigezela. Eh iskole basiti granti nomasbonelelo esunigezela iskole esizmele. No gu ti zipi eh izi mipimbandela fanele ifago akensegi suguti bayabi. Njalo mchambe geko ta maylanan no gu ti lesu ismali. Nomama lesu bonelelo basebenzeka njalo. Iska baselandela iska thirty five so na esingena eskundele. Zeska ba fifty one somtehto mkuu. Eh stilinsegela ge kaku la zige. Yogisibiza ngo gu ti usfundisele umduana ekai home education. No gu ti zipi zinto fanele uzlandele akensegi suguti. Lo umuntu kati simbiza ngo utushola gu tumduana sesinge nelfanele ini. Eh maylanan oshelelo lesu mfundo. Fanele gu tumduana parati gua create R. No create three ku figure umuntu zoshol. Gu tumduana sapu bangendele fanele kubengayo. Parati gua create four no create six make that you create six na kona. Apinde abu elo umtazo opego gu ti. Umduana saha mbanjela inu guse gwe figure. Futige neska ba soktri na uiska ba esu seven two nine. Nakona opego gu tumduana saku bangendele in. Fanele gubenopfarazi ge obzoleto umzalo akensegi sae gu ti. Lo umduana uyolo geswolo njalo makpele lesu iska ba. Es tatu sengisbarile lesi zule si eskabeni eslandela. Eh o o uiska ba. Samashuma matabu nesitu passe stilinsegela kaku la zugu ti eh ipinshaulo. Nomama ku itala nganana umkumzalo. Na nomama imopi omuni umuntu ozu. Paka imninewane etu sae nomama ngayona. Eh nomama ekokotelewe imbalo tiseni. Uma ifagistela suguti we moglelumumduana. Nomama mchambe fagistela suguti akulu letena koke eh imali skole. Besu gu ti iska baselandela yogesona skati seven sipegalela kaku la zizi. Esinda ba ez tita mchambe makukona. I ushelelo gu ti kono ngabone ngasolinye ipi mipi eh eh mko mko tu ekfanele landele. Besu gu ti iska ba thirty eight so na. Sutribela iska ba samashumi ace two so mtehto mkuu. Eh sibuga uku keli nisagumbo so nomama ku hulume. Na nomama i i ku peo ngenzega eskolene esu nomama temesho nomama mona lalo. Ona fanele gu tu kokoe skole esu ngazange. Zulandele imi imi silandele mkuu tefanele guse si. Fagistela ma ngabe sibese nze isvumeluwa mchambe za 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 ismali mbolego njalo njalo. Eh naabanya abantu ngalegu gu ti sazise eh eh sazisa umyango. Njoba kubegwe pambilini. Besu gu ti iska baselandela yogesona sutribela iska ba sixty one somtehto mkuu. Esunigeza ge umngongo shes. Kaswelo ngage amandla ugu ti eh eh pasisege eh eh logisitimtehto ngu. Na yo ngamtehto ngu bo ushilo zubuetu gu ti. Angage ngendele umngongo shavela ipasisengalo gu gu ti. Alandela ushelelo fana na lolilo gu ti. Aswe izimbo zumparati. Besu gu ti ge iska ba soktri na eh masubuga maylanan nesasa nomama. Iskus eh 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 umtehto mkuu. Iska ba si samashumi amane eh so na ge si tribeela ge esinjalelo. Osu figure ektrineni kualisi kualisitribela salo mtehto. Eselandela yo forty one forty two so na ge. Si pegalele kaku la zidugu pegan. Uku tribeela indelela obegwe ngayo isi kaba sokala neseslan. Somtehto i i i ei ogu mtehtoge ukasha guti sha nomama abafundi. Besu gu ti iska ba. Samashuma mane nan tatu yogesona esitribela iska ba siskombisa somtehto i i. Si zama ugu ti si elulege mchambe ge eh si kulume maylanan. No shelo gema twa gu asha abafundisi nomama otisha. Fanele ba asha ngendelela ndele mtehto aseningzim Afrika. Gube noblingi swa ekta swenigwe skala. Opegalelewe ndefana ge na logisibiza ngenge ngenge equity. Mchambe gu ti gu gu kuta shongo. Ogubuga ugu ti ningsim Afrika eh mchambe ngobuga. Imtehto segela waseningzim Afrika nemi nyenje mtehto. Efanele esu ge i kusela ugu ti. Agu kuta shongo blenga na nganjela enoblungu. Besu gu ti is isi kaba forty four forty five no forty six so na ge. Zibuga footi zenza itribelo esu ngati. Indelela obegage ngayo isi kaba eight nine no eleven somtehto mkuu. Guse samsane ge eh nesinto esesengele. Eh gulu mkaka wizomfundu zowenzisbonelogo. Gu ti kufana no further in education and training. Nabotive tabase kwa ngapansige. Go yango we mfundo acege. Fanele gu esindesfana analizo resources. Oguze kwasu gu ti guvele ugu ti lomtehto. Opegene ngono mfundo eh eh sege. Besu gu ti ge isi kaba forty seven so na ge. Esitribela isi kaba seventeen somtehto mkuu. Ngokfaga ge i i i uku sugelozenzos ngatato njenge senzo. Zogu ngaspati kache. Eh besu kuti ge isikaba sama shumi amane ne na ne shakalo mbili so nage nasosipegelele. Uguguga indela uke wenge ngayo mchambe eh isikaba eh se shumi ne shakalo. Mbili somte tu mkuu besu kuti iskaba esile ndela iska iska forty nine so nage. Se fago iskaba si sheskaba se shumi ne shakalo mblunye. Esi nginda no meswimbe la. Abo tisha oguti benzi umsebenzi no hulmeni. Oguti makasho hulmena kwanzu ba ne ngampanaya kozutrina se aksho futu tchola kalo guti yona. Eh yenzo umsebenzi ne numbuso besu kuti iskaba sama shumama shano so nage sipegelelo guti si kribela iskaba sama shumama tatu na tlanu somte tu mkuu. Ugnige sage na kona futu unngongosha gazelonke amanja oguti enze mtetongo bo eh mailanega kulazi. No aksho waba sebenzi ezingeni lezo funda. Besu kuti iskaba esile ndela sama shumama shano na ye si kritage iskaba no ma si si kreta iskaba. Same shumama tatu ne shakalo mbili somte tu mkuu besu kuti isikaba fifty two no fifty three. So nage si shose ogutunsegisukuti lezi kribelo es tez krijielwa u u iskaba eighteen eh no shetultu umte tu mkuu. Ngendela sbegege ngayo ziafezegisso besu kuti iskaba soktri na. No uwi iskaba ge sama shumama shano na ne. Guo thuma ngabe esupasi lelo umte tu ay manje. Guo besa ubizo agen gopfingbo sekthiwa ge umte tu gazelonke. Okkribela mtetweze mfundo eh segel o gazelon. Eh se abo ngawakulu eh oguzo wenzega agemanchi. Oguti si zovumela. Oguti si. Senzelo kwenkulme ngafuma skala X. Odage si esnega anis katige wenzelo guti. Sena kulumi eh eh u indenga pe. Unale shalebe wela apambileza pegan ngasemiang. Ma nginigi number lo zo zo salala. Wenzelo guti si vumela uka ngikombele o number six ma o number six. No ma o number one ma o number six. Ukona ngitengsisa uwi tizelela ukona. Ugu ugu ama form za bebe ke palapa. Nga singena ngiyakala nikssebenzi se loko. Ukala ogu nyagwe zivon no maymbonoye. No bagumenzela ufi se ugu shoyonke to la utoli guti. Kotaro kona katia owo to uso. Besu se aksho amola u nganti mo palepansi. Se zowa zo guti si kwazi uku to bo. Eh in short. We are now going to allow members of the public. To do what I ask us to do in the morning. That you seek charities. Eh you might want to give us your views but if you give your give us your views. You take an hour alone. You eh leave me with no other option but to cut you. But there are forms that eh were given eh when you entered this hall. My proposal is that use those forms. Make your views known there. They will be taken as written submissions. Eh so that eh we we do not miss eh important things that you want you might want to say. Because of the limited time that we are going to give people who want to say something here. So we 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 are going to give you numbers because only because I don't know your names really. So you are going to be a number but when you get eh to a mic. You please start by telling us who you are and where you are from. Everyone is going to make a comment or ask. Do not ask us our political views I I did indicate that. Eh you you might not get very far because these members will not respond. Eh what we want is really to get an understanding whether you understand the law as it is. Eh and when we find time as eh politicians. Will debate how we see the law so today it's not going to happen. Eh you might live here without even knowing who we are in eh in terms of our political eh persuasions. So we are not going to be doing that. All we want is to get an indication of eh whether you you think eh those who are drafters of these laws. Have took into account what concerns you or they did not. So you everyone is going to come if I give you a number you are going to come in front this city here. This is that eh you then come here if you are number one you will then speak. Eh if you are number ten you will speak last. So I'm going to ask you so that eh you you don't suggest I'm rude. Eh I'm naturally not but eh I'm at work I might come up come at as rude. Do not force me to stand up and stop you eh while speaking because eh it that's what eh looks like. So you all have three minutes it's timed this three minutes. So it's not like I have eh a favor so I'll give you twenty or or give you ten. So everyone's got ten minutes but you still have time to make written submissions to the portfolio committee. I'm told that the last date of these written submissions is twenty fourth of February. Do use that eh platform it works. You might have some things that are written already here. If you made those eh you you if you if you your time eh you get cut because eh of time. But you still have written submissions. Please do not leave with those written submissions give it give it to the front desk. I'm told eh I I was giving you four days eh more. So I'm told is eh the last day for the written submission is the twenty twentieth not the twenty fourth. So eh I was being generous I was giving you four days more but. Uso lokwala we we goktumela imono yenu umsaga twenty ku feboar. Si fuwiti zelela legu ti yenze ni le umbono. Ugwenzeluguti na yo inga faleginga panza ngenzela. Ukonto ipalila la ngoto penebe iskatu ngeshongo. Uha ambina yo utatwe tula papambele nikshi agie na le umbono. Ugu se si kwazi ugu ilandela na yo. Now we are going to do like this eh by show of hands I'm going to give you numbers. Eh so those who want to say something in their three minutes they must show they must raise their hands now. La baba fisukpaula eh ba mshala baparamisisanda. Ukumuleki no bonoyako besu we are move out zo salaglesu wenzelo guti. Si bo nguti eh si banagim. Please maofiga ze shika manesbo ngutupumapi. Eh please remember to just tell us your name eh and where you are from. It helps also for the records so that eh you do not accuse these members. Of calling in business somewhere eh with with their friends. And then they say they have they had a hearing. So those records are very important to us. Eh I so said number one you are number one. Eh ma ma member number two at the back there. Say you are going to number three. You're number four. You're number five sir. You're number six. You're number seven man. You're number eight. Alright let's leave it at that we will see how it goes. Please come forward remember your numbers. Eh we start here with a gentleman here who's number one. And eh we count the three minutes whilst you introduce yourself.
Good morning to the panel eh my question is around grade R. Oh sorry thousand apologies I'm Clint Leviton. I come from ward sixty eight in Etiguini Asagai Primary School. Eh grade R being made compulsory right now I don't feel is a viable option. The majority of the public schools to be honest does not have the necessary infrastructure or capacity for this to be rolled out. The DOE along with public works eh cannot even repair and fix the current infrastructure that's in place. How on earth are they going to build the necessary additional classrooms to accommodate these young learners? Eh coming from a public school system I'm fully aware that the necessary infrastructure is not in place. So if we're going to have an influx of let's say three hundred grade R learners where are we going to accommodate these people? Thank you.
Pleading to the chair and to the portfolio committee. Uh thank you for this wonderful opportunity to everyone that is here. Eh I reject the Bella Bill in its entirety. Eh my key eh clauses that I'm really concerned about is clause twenty five thirty five and thirty nine. I believe that the state and the government both the minister and the department of basic education are far reaching in their authority. I believe in the rights of parents and that needs to be protected at all costs. I believe that the bill will create an environment for our children to be vulnerable to predators particularly around. Eh life skills which they call CSE comprehensive sexual education. I'm really concerned about that and I'm concerned about children being able to get medical treatment and abortions. Without the consent of their parents or their guardians and I believe that that is a no no so a no to the Bella Bill. Thank you so much.
Good morning Chair. All protocol observed my name is Ines Kretzinger I am from the SOU Teachers Union. All protocol observed thank you very much for the opportunity. SOU KZN reaffirms our commitment to the advancement of quality public education. We fully support no unfair discrimination on the basis of race gender or any arbitrary grounds. Based on some of the proposed Bella amendments there is now only one dominant role player the state. Most of the proposed amendments we fully support but the SOU does not support the following amendments. Admission policy. Section five subsection five the HOD has final authority. Eh well this final authority is not acceptable it's not constitutional. I want to refer to the M E C of Education of Gauteng versus the governing body of Rivonia Primary School in twenty thirteen. The language policy section six. The HOD may approve language or amend and return to the SGB with such recommendation. That gives the HOD the veto right which is also unconstitutional. The HOD may direct a public school to adopt more than one language of instruction again the right to veto. And here I would like to refer to the Constitutional Court. The head of head of Umphimalanga Department of Education and others versus Welshwell Armalua and others in twenty twenty. The SOU formally propose to retain section six with regard to language policy in public school. It has passed its constitutional scrutiny. Avoid litigation the veto power of the HOD opens door for constitutional contestation. School capacity. Any school reaches a critical point when it must be regarded as full. Observe criteria for this post is required. Regulation none of the minimum norms and standards for public school infrastructure is abused. Section twenty. The utilization of the unilateral utilization of school facilities. It is not acceptable that the local district office may may be allowed to control the utilization of school facilities. Section twenty one three A the compulsory centralized procurement. The centralized procurement of the PPEs during the covid nineteen period graphically illustrates the danger. The SOU would furthermore like to propose a new governance model. The current model has been in place for twenty six years. Many public schools are exemplary and comparable to the best independent schools. Section twenty one A status is proposed for these schools and I'm just eh in ending. The criteria that we propose is a three year clean financial audit. Comply minimum criteria determined by the minister with regards to academic performance. And a three year proven record regarding academic performance thank you Chair.
Good day eh to the HODs and the committee for this opportunity to comment on the Bella Bill. My name is Carl Necker I'm from Hawick I'm married I got two children one is seven. Eh one is four I'm a concerned parent. We've started homeschooling with our children from the age of five it has really worked for us. Eh it's neither inferior to public or private school standards. Because we come from a family of educators eh my wife has her honors I finished my midship with other qualifications as well. I disagree and do not accept the Bella Bill specifically clause thirty five which amends section fifty one of the Sasa. And deals with home education. I don't believe an official should be able to override a parent's decision to homeschool. It's the fundamental principle of the international education law. That the parent has the prior right to choose the kind of education a child receives. And the Bella Bill makes significant inroads into that right. I would like to explain that as a parent I know my child intimately and therefore. In a much better I'm in a much better position to make decisions on the best interests of my child without having to spend extra time or money. With someone with with someone with less knowledge of our child should not be allowed to overrule this decision. I I want to explain and I understand with respect that the HOD's areas of expertise is school education however. The decision to home educate our children is rarely if ever made solely on on purely educational grounds. Eh why I say this is because you have to consider financial psychological religious social and other factors as well. I I want to repeat that the the HOD's area of expertise is homeschool education and that he or she is not equipped. To make decisions in a family sphere. Non educational factors that I have to consider for another meeting because of three minutes. Eh namely namely things that are in contradiction to our beliefs as a family and faith beliefs. Eh in in contradiction to marriage sexuality eh eh creation and evolution. A CSE and and gender we love all genders we love everybody equally but we would like the right to choose for our children. Our family religious beliefs values and philosophy should not be taken away from us as parents. Proposals number one upholding the rule of law we propose clear guidelines to ensure that officials. Respect the educational choices made by parents in the best interest of their children. Proposing a new regulatory framework we advocate for a new research based regulatory framework. This should limit the powers of the head of department in overriding parental decisions. And involve judicial oversight in disputes regarding the the adequacy of home education. Guidance for officials in home education we propose a framework for officials to to develop. To to sorry to be developed to intervene in cases where home education may not serve the child's best interest. But without impinging on the rights of responsible homeschooling parents. Time is up. Thank you so much.
Good day to the HOD and to our honorable members. Eh my name is Mina Kiston eh from ACDP also the NGO called Seen a parent and an ex educator. Eh we reject the Bella Bill and in particular clause twenty five thirty five and thirty nine. Clause thirty nine allows the minister to make regulations concerning learner pregnancy. The DBE is then seen as not serious about stopping learner pregnancy. I mean there was a time when I know that condoms were actually handed out in primary schools. And if anything it did not curb the problem but escalated the problem of teen pregnancy. Eh educators must follow these plans or be fired eh and if this is against their beliefs. Regulations will make CSE the law of the land. DBE owns research showed these scripted lessons plan do not work. Clause thirty nine gives the minister powers to send educators to jail if they do not teach the CSE. Which is a comprehensive sexual education this takes away our constitutional rights. We reject clause thirty nine and say adopt the ACDP plan to stop teen pregnancy. Clause twenty five means small schools can then close without reasons. Schools under under hundred thirty five learners should be treated as same as big schools. We reject this eh as unconstitutional discrimination. In clause thirty five the minister also wants to make regulations for homeschoolers. Now I myself is a parent of a homeschooling learner and I think coming out with the draconian laws. Eh is actually going to restrict parents from being parents and allowing state to take control of our learners which is unconstitutional. The DBE does not know homeschooling. These regulations must be written in consultation with homeschoolers who know homeschooling. A freedom of curriculum and assessment clause must be added so that homeschoolers can not follow their beliefs. And do not do the comprehensive sexual education that's been pushed down. Amended amend the Bella Bill to protect freedom of belief of educators and SGB members. Teachers should have the right not to teach CSE. School governing bodies should have the right to stop CSE in their school. Parents and learners should have the freedom of belief and have the right to opt out of CSE. So I think when we look at the entire law eh this is actually pushing on beliefs and systems. That is going to corrupt our young children even if you look at different clauses and gives the 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 minister powers actually to to control. And and when you look at a twelve year old child going and having an abortion eh.
Give that eh so give that to the next lady thank you very much.
Good afternoon members honorable members and the public. My name is Janet Martins I'm from Hilton. I'd like to bring to the honorable members eh attention the KZN regulations on home education. Eh these regulations are going to be conflicting with the Bella Bill. Eh and so I believe that the CISA has not been done correctly. Because there is no mention of the KZN regulations. The Bella Bill will clash with these regulations but the public will have to. Follow the Bella Bill and the KZN regulations so please repeal these regulations. I reject the bill for the following reasons. The bill sorry which way is the best way to go. The bill is procedurally flawed because home educated sections are not based on research. There has been no research into home education. And how is it possible for the DBE to understand and. And how is it possible for the D B E to understand and regulate the sector if no research into this area and no stakeholders or their representatives like the Pestilotsy Trust has been included in their research? C S A guidelines require that this research be done. The bill is procedurally flawed because the economic, socioeconomic impact assessment was not published with the bill in two thousand and seventeen and twenty-two. How am I able to know the impact to my family if this socioeconomic impact assessment was not done? I especially feel that this is true for spread or compulsory attendance and home educator sections, sectors. Clause thirty-five, two, A, three, lack of choice of which program home educators would be able to choose. We need freedom of curriculum choice and methodology. Clause thirty-five, section six, deemed registration. If the department does not respond, the H O D should merely have to acknowledge the registration. I feel registration should be as simple as applying for an I D document or passport. We as parents should not have to request permission for something that we have been given by God. God has given us these children to educate. They are given to us by Him, and He has given us authority to educate them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Committee and the public. I am a very concerned grandparent and an ex-teacher. This law undermines parents' rights. Children belong to parents and not to the state. It would be a travesty if this bill is adopted. My children, grandchildren go to Underburg School, and three of them are homeschooled by my daughter who's just spoken. Thank you.
I didn't get your, your name, ma'am, your name?
Carrie Craig.
Thank, thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon to the portfolio committee, good afternoon, members of the public. This afternoon, just in a nutshell, we're not going to speak about section thirty-nine, section thirty-five, section twenty-five. The, 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 the summary of this is that it's special education needs adaptive methods of education. In a nutshell, it's basically saying our children must leave the homes under the constitution of our governments. And the word of God says a parent must discipline their child, raise them up in the fear of the Lord. So we are here this afternoon saying we stand against the Bella Bill because it takes away the right of a parent to educate, to train the child up in the way that they should go, and when they are older, they will not depart from it. So we are standing on the word of God that said, we will not stand for abortions, we will not stand for teenage pregnancies, we will not let the child in the sight by themselves or themselves when they live under their parents' roof, and their parents must help them and train them in the way that they should go.
Thank you. I'm now going to invite Monica, if there are technical issues that she will respond to. After that, we'll see if there is someone who really wants to raise a different point. I don't want to be accused also of limiting you, but in any meeting, it's fair that if a point has been raised, because it's probably the same point, if it's been raised, it's been raised and is taken into account. I will then see after that if there are new, new, new points. Different offers have raised section twenty-five, section thirty-five, section thirty-nine, homeschooling. So I'm just indicating that I am intent to allow for other hands, but unless we are raising something that has not been raised, it's only fair that we treat it that way. Monica?
Thank you, Chairperson. Chair, I will only clarify a few issues, I will not go into matters that deal with policy, because I can only speak to what is in the bill. But what I want to say is we've really noted your comprehensive submissions, they are very comprehensive, especially on the home education. If you can please give us all those submissions, because, and you can hand them over to Google. And if you want to add more, we have Google's email address, please feel free to add anything else you want, all comments and submissions. I can tell you we have about four thousand, four thousand emails as at last week will be considered by this committee. That is what they are required to do. So we will note, there are good proposals that we are noting, and it is the work of this committee to consider all those proposals clause by clause and see what you have said. So we really appreciate. I do need however to clarify some things. Number one, commented about compulsory school attendance and no infrastructure in school. We have somebody from the Department of Basic Education, Chair, I'm not sure whether he will be commenting on such issues or not, but I think he would be better placed to comment on something like that. We also note number two, who mentioned clause twenty-five, clause thirty-five, clause twenty-nine, and we note your opinions, however, there is no mention of abortion in this bill. And we did say the minister, we said please read the correct bill. I even said please collect the bill, the correct bill that we are presenting today is at the back. And if you go to that clause thirty-nine, it says that the minister has a right to make regulations, not now, in the future. So there are no regulations now, anything to do with pregnancy or abortion is not in this bill. And I did clarify that minister does have a right to make regulations and ministers, the law is passed, regulations come and explain things that cannot be explained in the bill. And whenever those regulations are passed, whether it's to do with admission of learners or regulating pregnancy, if the minister is proposing to bring that, it must go to parliament. The bill says the minister must take those regulations to parliament. Those regulations must then go to N C O P, and those regulations must come before this committee. And once again, this committee will give you an opportunity to comment. If that policy then is speaking about abortions, sex education and all the other things people are mentioning here, then you will have an opportunity to comment. But please note that clause thirty-nine is not regulating anything to do with sex education or abortion, it's incorrect. The other thing that I want to mention is, I think it was a speaker from Hilton who spoke about the K Z N regulations that need to be repealed. And we are also aware of other comments about certain Department of Basic Education policies, which may be contradicting what is in the bill. So we've noted those comments very clearly and we will have a look at what the K Z N regulations are saying, because yes, we don't want to pass a law which is going to contradict with what is in the province. The other comments, Chairperson, we have noted them and we appreciate them. I don't think I have anything else to add. Thank you, Chair.
Department of Education?
Chair, thank you very much. And let me really appreciate how the process has been handled by the Chair. And also, let also appreciate the inputs from the floor. There's not much that needs to be said because the legal services from the province has clarified most of the issues. Some of the issues that are made mention of, like comprehensive sexuality education, that is not the terrain of the department, but the terrain of the Department of Health, not necessarily the Department of Basic Education. When that happens, yes, it is done in consultation, but that process of comprehensive sexuality education rests solely with the Department of Health. The bill, in no way does the bill talk about abortion. Again, that is the terrain of the Department of Health. The Department of Basic Education does not have those expertise to deal with matters of abortion. I think let's clarify that. The other issue also that has been raised is that the department is, has not put systems in place in respect to the skills development in the country, and the curriculum is missing that. Let us also clarify that. The department has introduced what we call the three-string model. The three-string models seeks to cater for learners that are not academically inclined. What is three-string model? Three-string model, you have your technical occupational. Your technical occupational starts from grade four, and it covers a number of skill-based subjects. Your needlework, your woodwork, quite a number of subjects that have been covered. And those subjects do not necessarily deal with learners who are not academically inclined, but it deals with learners with learning disabilities so that they themselves have got a future. And that subject is also intended to take care of those learners. We then go to what is technical vocational? Technical vocational is your specialization. That starts from grade ten, where learners begin to choose a career choice. What are those technical or vocational subjects? That would be your technical science, your technical mathematics, your agricultural technology, your civil technology, your mechanical technology, your electrical technology, your marine and your aviation. Those are the subjects that the department has introduced to ensure that not, those learners that are not academic material can then be redirected to skills-oriented institutions. Something also that came up from the, from the homeschooling, that the, 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 the department is not taking care of, as, as, as special, special schools. That is why they, they decide also in terms of homeschooling. Our curriculum has got three strengths. That is knowledge, skills, values and attitude. Our curriculum has got what we call the principles of N C S. The principles of N C S which has got a bearing in the constitution emphasizes what we call inclusion. And inclusion talks about those learners, because learners are differently gifted. How is it addressed in the curriculum? We've got what we call expanded opportunities, which is there in the curriculum. What does expanded opportunity means? Expanded opportunity simply means cater for the different types of learners that are in your classroom. Those learners who are cognitively given and those learners who are cognitively challenged. How does the department do that? When the lesson plan is delivered in the classroom, we've got what we call differentiated learning, which ensures that diversity in the classroom is accommodated. That also you find in the White Paper Six, which talks about inclusion. And White Paper Six has got also what we call C S, screening, identification, assessment and support. And that is also intended to support those kinds of learners, so that every learner has the benefit of what the education system is all about. There's, there, there, that, that, the White Paper Six has been made, has been created to ensure that there's no exclusion in the delivery of the curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think it was really just expanding on what, you know, when I started, because I was preempting some of the questions. That's why when, when we started, I said, can we really stick to the bill in the current form? Because in the current form, there are things that we are mentioning that are not there. Right? So that's why I was preempting some of the things. And we are noting, I think there are good points that have been made, which we need to go back and really consider them. What I'm going to do now, I'm going to look for a hand or hands that somebody who says there is no way, there's something fundamentally we are missing. But I still want to urge you, please, those who had written submissions, please don't live with them, because it will help us to engage with those submissions even further as the committee, so that you, as you are aware, we are a country that has nine provinces. So that we also make informed, or we take informed positions, as was Natal, in terms of what we think, when this comes to an end, so that our views are also taken into account. If there's somebody who says, no, Chair, I hear you, but there's something that is fundamentally missing, I want to say, I'll give that opportunity, going once, oh, there's a lady there, please come forward, ma'am. Had I realized that you, you come for the second time, I would have not, uh, space to speak to that accord, ma'am.
Okay, it's Michelle Chian from Ward Thirty-Six. I just want to make an inquiry. One of the issues that we have had with the hearings is that the venues for these hearings have been far apart. I just want to understand how were the venues chosen? Because for instance, in Itsegrini, we didn't have a hearing in Itsegrini, so we've had to travel two and some people three hours for a hearing. So could it not have been brought closer to the people? So that's my one question. The second question that I do have is around the education and the notification about this bill to the layperson, just to the public. We haven't been schooled in what this bill is, many of us have gone through a lot of research that we've had to do to kind of empower ourselves for these hearings. So I just want to understand, why has that not been maybe done a little more comprehensively? Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am, I will, I will clarify, you see, I will clarify why you are here, because somebody might turn around and say, why didn't you, why didn't you go to a proper? A province of Gwazimatal, so a proper is part of the province. But there's, there was, there was a thinking, ma'am, that taking into account resources as well. Ettequen had had few hearings conducted by the National Committee, National Portfolio Committee of Education last year already. So it will have, what we then looked at was, is it possible that we spread the hearings to different parts of the is it possible that we spread the hearings to different parts of the province? Instead of all of us thinking Etteguin is the, is where hearings. I know, I'm trying to be corrected, but the National Portfolio Committee of Education had about two or three hearings in Derby or in the metro, let me put it that way. So then it becomes unfair of the provincial committee to go at the same metro. That's, that's really the logic that we, we, we used. But let's go to other, what you term rural towns as well. We went to Guisa, we went to Machu Picchu, we went to Apurama. Because we think it's something that we must try and spread as well. Of course, there is always an issue of resources. There's also always an issue if we are really consulting enough. I, I, I'm the first to agree, we will not. I think if we had all the time as well and resources, we probably have to go to everywhere. But we expect that councilors, because one of the things, not only councilors, us here as members of the legislature, we must find a way of consulting our conferences. It's what we must do. So that our conferences, they must have, in one another, be able to input without having to cover three hours, for example, just being aware. The hearings were publicized in different newspapers. I know in the Mercury in Derby, I know Isola as well, I know Filanga. I'm not sure in, in terms of other regions, in terms of the local newspapers. But we also, at some point, were able to go to community stations, for example. So that we are able to explain and people can make an input. I know, one of the things that are challenging is when we say to our people, you must write your comments, everyone thinks we want them to write a PhD thesis so that their, their comments make sense. When we say you must write, you must write at your level of understanding what we're talking about. The, the, the language, you must write, use the language that you are comfortable. If we don't understand, there are people who are employed in the legislature who then help us understand the language. So that we are also, we don't leave things out because they're written in Sisulu, for example. So this issue of writing, we really, really want you to, to try out. And my understanding is that the bill, as it stands, is in our, it's on our website, both in Sisulu and English. But in some instances, it's in Africans, for example. In some instances, it's a choice because obviously where the dominance of a language is, so they take that into account as well. But no one is, is, is being prevented to comment on this bill. We actually know how important is this bill. We, we are quite aware how crucial is this bill for, for, for the future of our education in the country. And there are things that are in the bill and I hear some colleagues are saying there is no research. There are some things in this bill as it stands. Some of them are taken into account, good practices somewhere else in the world. Because we also don't live in an island of South Africa. Some of these kids will go out and, 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 and study overseas or work overseas. So you, you need to take into account what, what, what's the world, where the world is going. So we can't just be thinking of us only. So all I'm saying is that every quote, there is nothing wrong, there is nothing wrong or right answer here. It's because we quite understand the importance. And I do want to thank you as well for, for taking it serious. Because it's, 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 it might not be about us today, but certainly about the future of our country. Because these kids are going to be future for our country. So it's important that we thank you for taking it serious. We, we, all the views make sense to us. There is no view that doesn't make sense. We might, at the end of the day, disagree about the approach. But I think all we can do is to agree that we all want the future of this country to be better. There is someone who lost, there are no classes inside, but please get your classes case. I'm told now that we've come to a conclusion of this meeting, you are invited to have lunch. Thank you very much. And those who are driving, drive safe back home. Thank you very much.